Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire. Fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. You're ready. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. You're ready. Oh, 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 oh. You're ready. Oh, 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 oh. The heat will take us higher, oh, 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 oh. Feel it. Oh, 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 oh. I can feel it. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh.
Fourth, the time is 9:34 a.m. A call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Tracy Hipps, Executive Director of the Christian Service Mission, and I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand, if you're willing and able. Thank you.
I'll read a verse, and then I'm going to pray. "A child is born to us; a son was given to us. The government will rest on his shoulders." Lord, this government rests on your shoulders. Then the responsibility of this government rests on their shoulders, so they'll fulfill their call as ministers of this government, as ministers of the gospel, as ministers to you and for the people of this city. I pray, God, that they would do everything with righteousness and justice as their foundation for this city, for the health and thriving of this city. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and thank you, Reverend Hipps, for that prayer. Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning.
If you would call the roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Abbott, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Moore. Good morning. Councilmember O'Quinn. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Smithman. Morning. Council President Alexander.
Good morning, President. Thank you very much. Counselors, we have before us approval of the minutes from previous meetings, September 6th, September 13th, September 20th, and September 27th, 2022. If you've read those minutes, I would like to ask for a motion and approval of each of those minutes.
Hey, Councilmember Moore, Protem Smithman. Voting should be open right about now.
All right.
Hold on, my sister.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott, how would you like to go on?
I voted aye.
Okay. I got, oh, you did. That was quick. Okay.
All right.
Two and four. Okay. That's everybody.
All right. Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Counselors and minutes are not ready from October 3rd, 3rd, October 3rd, 2022 through January 17th, 2023. Good morning, chiefs. Do we have any communications from the mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam President, Madam Protem, members of the council, and members of the public. Have a meaty mayor's report, so I'll try to be as succinct as possible. We know that the temperatures are dropping, so the city of Birmingham, along with Jimmy Hale Mission, will be opening a warming station from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 26th, and Friday, January 27th. Those needing warming shelter can come to the mission, located at 3420 Second Avenue North. Food will be provided. We ask that everyone, please spread the word to make sure that those needing warm shelter take advantage. Madam President, members of the council, we'd like to announce that we invite all of our citizens to join Mayor Woodfin each Saturday on V-94.9 for the Magic City Spotlight radio show from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Mayor Woodfin will discuss events, programs, initiatives. He'll also shine a light on the special people and organizations in our city. You can listen on the radio at 94.9 FM, or you can download the V-94.9 app and listen from your phone. You can also check out the Magic City Spotlight podcast on Spotify. We are pleased to celebrate our Birmingham's recently elected neighborhood officers. They're going to be sworn in on Tuesday, January 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Boutwell Auditorium. Mayor Woodfin would like to express his gratitude for them accepting this mantle of leadership, and we look forward to them serving to make our city a better place for everyone. The city of Birmingham and the Penny Foundation are also hosting a free event to celebrate the resiliency and tenacity of mothers with its Embrace Mothers Moms Night Out. On Monday, January 30th, area moms will enjoy a film screening and fellowship at the Sidewalk Film Fest Film Center and Cinema, located at 1821 Second Avenue North. The event begins at 6:15 with complimentary beverages and popcorn, and then at 7:00 p.m., the screening of the movie Waiting to Exhale will begin. Registrants will also receive a voucher for up to $30 off babysitting services in the Wendy app. This event is made possible through the generosity of mayors for a guaranteed income, MGI. And Madam President, members of the council, we got word this morning that the event sold out, actually, in less than 24 hours, which shows us the great need for supporting and celebrating our mothers. So due to the high demand, we're also looking to explore hosting more events like this in the future. So for those who are not able to register, please keep your eyes and ears open. More to come. For more information, go to birminghamal.gov/EmbraceMothers. Couple more, Madam President and members of the council. For those who are visiting City Hall and many of our other city facilities, you probably have noticed a change to our restroom facilities. All single-stall restrooms have been converted to all-gender restrooms. This is a part of the mayor's commitment and the city's commitment to making Birmingham and City Hall a welcoming place for all of our residents and visitors. Couple more, Madam President. An information meeting for community partners interested in submitting a request for proposals for our micro-shelters pilot, Home for All, will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 26th. You can get more information and a link to the virtual meeting by going to birminghamal.gov/HomeforAll. Many people are probably excited to hear that the second distribution of 20,000 uniform trash bins are expected to take place in the month of February. Those residents in this second batch will be notified via mail, and they'll also receive instructions. As a reminder, for those who are already using the carts, you should place them in the front of your homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or on the ground in front of the residence will not be picked up. You can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting BHAMREADY to 888-777. Two more, Madam President. Many of our citizens, many of the council, and members of the administration have taken part in PagePals. We'd just like to note that PagePals volunteers are still needed to assist designated third-grade library times through read aloud and conversation. Reading sessions will take place in 14 different Birmingham City Schools, elementary schools across all nine districts. You can sign up for PagePals at bhameuthfirst.org-pagepals to select your school and time. And finally, Madam President and members of the council, members of the public, Mayor Woodfin is absolutely proud to announce the appointment of Ms. Mashonda Taylor to the Birmingham Waterworks Board. Mashonda serves as Executive Director of Woodline United. She is a member of multiple boards, including the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, the James Rushton Early Learning Center, and Jones Valley Teaching Forum Farm. Her appointment is effective immediately and will fill a vacancy on the board. Mashonda's term expires on December 31st, 2024, and Mayor Woodfin would like to thank her for her service. Madam President, Madam Protem, members of the council, that ends the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, for those messages. I am delighted that the Embrace Mothers event is a sellout. I'm very excited about that. How often do you get some type of voucher for babysitting? So hope that those mothers will really enjoy that event, and as you think forward to have that opportunity for other mothers in this city. And again, thank you for those comments. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you would read the items that are considered for consent.
It begins in the stars. Page two. We have items one, well, just item one is on consent. We need to make some changes on two and three. Item one was also recommended by Transportation Committee. Please note that recommendation. And page three, we have items four and six on consent. We also have to do some changes to item number five as far as money-wise, and also some voting changes. Page four. We are going to withdraw item number seven, which is on consent, and we pick back up with items eight and nine being on consent. On page 10, I'm sorry. We have items 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page six, we have items 13, 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Page seven, we have items 17, 18, 19, and 20 on consent. Page eight, we have items 21, 22, and 24 on consent. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. And counselors, do you have any items that you wish to add or remove to consent? And, Mr. Clerk, for clarity, did you say items two, three, and five? Are they still on consent, or they're being approved?
No, we're going to have to do a UC vote first to approve those items.
All right. Thank you. So those items two, three, and five. Yes, Councilmember Clark?
That is, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Five? Yes, ma'am. Uh, it's all.
All right. That's okay. Counselor Abbott?
For our consumption and information, but could we really not use the word busted water coil? I mean, it makes us sound, well, busted? Busted pipes?
That's an emergency notice from the purchasing agent, which is a request to, um...
Burst. Busted is slang. We don't want to have slang in our meeting agenda.
We'll note that the typo or the insertion of the correct grammatical reference to that item. Any other items, counselors? All right. Thank you. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I can entertain a motion, the second, for approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Second, please. All right. Come on. Councilmember Abbott, and seconded by Councilmember Clark. Voting should start right about now. All right. That vote should be up.
All right. Thank you, counselors. The consent agenda passes. If you were here to listen to any of the items that were listed as consent, they have been approved. We hope you have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Clerk, first item.
All right. Item two. A resolution authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Leaders of Excellence in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to fund the Providing Opportunities for Wealth and Economic Resilience Program, Power, the Power Career Readiness Program, designed to prepare youth and young adults aged 16 to 24 experiencing academic learning and job training loss due to COVID restrictions for high-demand jobs through workforce education, paid student internships, and eliminating barriers of employment by connecting program participants with employers. And as mentioned, we're going to need UC to entertain this item today.
I'll vote for UC.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Need a motion on item.
I move the item.
All right. Item is before you.
All right. Thank you, counselors. This is an ARPA-related item. That is from District One, and this is for the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city and Leaders of Excellence. Counselors, or the administration, any items regarding this item? Counselors, any questions? All right. We're ready for the vote.
All righty. That vote should be up.
Thank you. Item number two passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Let's go to three. Item three. A resolution authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and One Place Family Justice Center in an amount not to exceed $150,000 to fund the expansion of the existing One Place facility to allow more criminal justice professionals from across the city and county to work together through this community violence intervention program to prevent future homicides that often begin as domestic violence cases. Need UC as well for this item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. I need a motion on the item.
I move the item.
Second.
All right, counselors. This is another ARPA item. That is for District One. This is authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city and One Place Family Justice Center. Any updates from administration? I'm sorry. District One and Eight. I apologize. And, um...
And Four.
And Four. How about that? One, Eight, and Four. All right, counselors. Any questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote.
All right. Vote should be up.
All right, counselors. That item passes. Next item.
All right. Going to item five. A resolution approving authorized the mayor to execute a consulting agreement with the Aspen Institute Incorporated, under which the Aspen Institute will provide services to support the planning stage of the Birmingham Aspen Justice and Governance Partnership, which is designed to improve analytical capacity and support policy improvements focused on ending overdependence on criminal legal system and stimulate reinvestment in the local people institutions and network most knowledgeable about neighborhood safety and justice, and city will pay a fee to the Aspen Institute Incorporated in the amount of, oh, the amount not to exceed $275,000 for the services. And we need to make some notations that $150,000 are coming from District Nine, $50,000 from District Eight, $50,000 from District One, and $25,000 from District Six.
Okay. Could you repeat those again? We have $150,000 from District Nine, $50,000 from D1, and?
D8 and $150,000. And District Six, $25,000.
All right. Thank you.
Same situation here. I need UC to entertain this item today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Motion on the item, please.
Thank you.
Item is before you.
All right. Thank you, counselors. This is another ARPA-funded item, and this is to give the mayor authorization to execute consulting agreement with the Aspen Institute for those amounts that have already been listed by the clerk. Mr. Hipps? Do you have any? Chief, chief, chief? Okay. Counselor Tate, I believe you had something you wanted to add.
And we'll yield to the council since it's the council's project.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam President. If you would allow, have Dr. Douglas Woods here from the Aspen Institute to speak, you know, about the item and tell some other good things that's coming along with the item.
All right. Dr. Woods, you have three minutes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Madam President, President Protem, honorable members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here, and we are so excited about beginning this planning process. I'd like to particularly thank Counselor Tate for her leadership, Counselor Clark, Counselor Woods, and also Counselor Smithman for your investment in this work. It's very exciting because we'll be able to begin the process of collecting data across the entire city and also the county, because we have been in deep conversations also with Commissioner Tyson to also invest in this work. This will allow us to be able to do acute analysis all the way down to the neighborhood level across different data sets, including criminal justice, critical healthcare, school discipline, income, housing, acute family interventions, race and ethnicity, so that we can make sure that we can do a cost analysis of that at every single neighborhood level, and then rethink how we might want to reinvest in those neighborhoods to mitigate against violence and other overlapping inequities. I'm also happy and pleased to say that we've been invited, Aspen, by the Ballmer Group to actually be a part of a brand-new initiative in community data collection. And we will be working towards getting $6 million from Ballmer, $2 million of which will be applied to the city of Birmingham to also augment your initial investment. The other exciting thing is that only six cities in the United States will be a part of this project, and Birmingham will be among the first of those six. So I'm happy to be here, and thank you so much for the investment, and we look forward to a continuing partnership.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Clark?
I just wanted to commend you for helping us stand up this model and plan for this implementation. Wanted to ask, will we have, will we own our data or have access, full access to the data? Which?
We have total access to it. This is the beauty of the host organization. The vast majority of this first investment will be given to a host organization to help plan the work and work directly with us, and then ultimately, we'll hand over that work to a local justice intermediary right here in the city of Birmingham that will be chosen by the planning and leadership council with representatives from the city and the county. And that data will be here in the city and in the county, and everyone will have access to it.
Everyone, like members of the public?
Yes.
Everyone?
Totally transparent. That's the whole beauty of it, is we want people to all have access right down to your neighborhood.
Okay.
So when I think about that, that means even things like summons, traffic stops, in-person stops, arrests, probation supervision, jail arrests, jail releases, prison admissions, prison releases, all of that, even down to emergency admissions into emergency rooms. We need to know how much that costs in order for us to be able to think about how we might reinvest back into those neighborhoods in a way that's a very targeted way to mitigate against violence and some of those other criminogenic risk factors that contribute to it. But you've got to have the data to be able to do that. And now, when I say, I'm going to say statewide data is fine, countywide data is fine, ZIP code data is fine. But the most important data is what happens at the neighborhood block level, because all that other data just covers up what's actually going on in neighborhoods.
Okay. I won't ask anything else. Anyways, sounds very exciting and like, you know, a great decision-making tool. And does it allow for predictive analytics at all?
Yes. That's also as a part of the work in the justice audit itself. And keep in mind, the data that I talked about is what we call hyper-local data. It'll also be combined with 180,000 other data variables from the American Community Survey, so that it'll be the most comprehensive data set down at the neighborhood level of any other initiative in the country, which is why Ballmer has invited us to be a part of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Protem?
It's good to see you, Doug.
Good to see you here, too.
Counselor Tate invited myself and Counsel Woods to the Aspen Institute, and not only was it beautiful, but it was great to learn about really the benefit of having the Aspen Institute as a partner, right? Because they really showed us that we have to use numbers in order to reallocate our resources, and also because a lot of times addressing crime needs to be really tackled from different angles, right? So you have the police angle, you have the hobby angle, and now you have the numbers. So for example, and you may correct me because I may be wrong, there was in New York, this is my favorite part. So Alabama doesn't do this, but they ask the prisoners, the inmates, when they get booked, do they have any children? And so they take where the children are, and they can match it to see what resources are needed. So for example, I think it was like lower reading levels were found within those areas where the inmates had children. And so that way, New York was able to take those resources, and instead of spreading it so thinly, because, you know, New York is huge, they were able to really focus on that area to those kids and really increase their reading levels. And so that's just an example of why it's so important that we need the Aspen Institute, because I think this will be able to help us a lot. And Counselor Tate, thank you so much for being an advocate for this. You really have been an asset to the council since we've been on here. And I really wanted, well, Counsel Woods isn't here, but Counsel Woods and Clark for supporting Counselor Tate. I look forward to seeing the progress. And also, this will take a while before we see the benefits from this, but I think this is the right direction to helping our city. So thank you. I'm really excited for this.
Thank you, Madam Protem.
Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Tate?
Madam President, let me just also give Counselor O'Quinn. He's also committed to be a part of the project as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we're ready for the vote. All right. Thank you. That item passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Thank you.
A resolution setting a public hearing February 21st, 2023, to consider the adoption of orders to amended zoning district map, case number ZAC 2022-6, to change zone district boundaries from B2 to general B1, qualified light manufacturing district filed by Dunco...
All right, counselors, this is a resolution setting a public hearing for February 24th, 2023. We're ready for the vote. All right, thank you, counselors. We've set that public hearing. Next item, Mr. Clark. Any other items? All right. Thank you, counselors. At this time, we'll entertain your comments from your district. Start with you, Counselor Clark. Are you ready? No. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. So in terms of neighborhood meetings in District Eight, the Bush Hills neighborhood will meet today at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Please go to www.bushhills.org to get the meeting access, Zoom access. Be sure to join us along with Black Warrior Riverkeeper as we take the Beelitter Free Campaign to the historic College Hills neighborhood. We will meet on Saturday, February 11th, at Our Lady Queen of the Universe Catholic Church Basketball Court. Registration starts at 9:30 AM with the cleanup starting at 10:00 AM. We're still walking, y'all. Every Thursday morning, we meet up at the Crossplex Starbucks about five minutes till eight for an eight AM sharp start. We do about a one and a quarter mile loop around the grounds there, and it's a great way to get moving, but also to get to know your neighbors. We partnered with the Freshwater Land Trust, who is working on a big trail extension from Bassamur along Valley Creek to terminate right now in this phase behind the Crossplex. So we're just building awareness about that project and having a good time. And all paces are welcome. You don't have to register, just show up. Also, the Birmingham Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a senior Mardi Gras party on February 21st at the Boutwell Auditorium. For more information, contact Lisa Pickens at 205-254-2303. Also, keep in mind that the success of the city's aquatics program depends on having trained lifeguards come Memorial Day weekend, which is when the pools will generally open. We are limited by, we have to have at least four lifeguards who are trained and certified and ready to go per pool that opens. And last year, we were woefully short on lifeguards compared to pools that were in condition to open. So if you're trying to lure college students home for the summer or what have you, just please, I think there's no age limit to lifeguards. All of us can become lifeguards. Counselor Abbott, that's to you. And Hunter.
I worked my way through college as a lifeguard and swimming instructor, so you are right. It does not require much, except passing a course.
Yeah. So the training is offered, well, it's offered indoors at the Crossplex, so no limit on access to the training facility. So just, if you know young, if you know people of any age who are willing and able to train and apply to become a lifeguard, the application's open on January 9th, they'll close on May 12th. And you can contact Terry Harris at 205-254-2189 for more information on that. We want to remind you that the Affordable Connectivity Program provides eligible households with $30 per month toward high-speed internet service, making some plans absolutely free. The program benefit can be applied to new or existing internet plan. Additionally, eligible households will receive a one-time discount of up to $100 to purchase a laptop, desktop computer, or tablet from eligible providers if they contribute more than $10 and less than $50 toward the purchase price. Anyway, that's confusing. For more information, go to www.birminghamal.gov/Connect99, or you may call 877-384-2575. Seven days a week, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. This week, we have one Neighborhood Association meeting that's taking place this Wednesday. Norwood Neighborhood Association will be meeting at 6:00 PM on Zoom. For more information, please check out the Birmingham City Council website and find District Four's page and find those details. Today and next Tuesday, Ursula Smith Adult Dance Series presents West African pop-up dance class. The class will be $25 per participant. To reserve your spot, please text DANCE to 205-202-9510. Want to say congratulations to Smith Middle School Girls Basketball Team for winning the East Championship and being named runner-ups for the BCS Citywide Championship. So congratulations to you all. UAB's Mobile Market Grocery Store on Wheels will be in Norwood as well, January 28th, from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. And in Kingston, January 20th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Come by to shop for healthy produce. Got another announcement, but we've got a special guest that'll make that one later. I did want to give, or say congratulations and job well done to IMC, Mr. Isaac Cooper and his team with the Financial Freedom Project. They sent out their nine-weeks report showcasing some of their different highlights. Some of the, some of the different highlights that, you know, I'll just kind of make mention of now is they were able to reach over two, or they were able to reach 355 students. And 119 faculty and staff and parents who participated in the workshop, they were able to help over, help them to alleviate over $320,000 of student loan debts, as well as help a high school senior to have a 750 credit score. Some of the things that they've been learning, they were able to take pre- and post-tests, and they saw 15% increases in those different tests. But some of the areas that they focused in on were earning income, spending, saving, investing, managing credit, and managing risk. A lot of the students gave testimonies about how they, how they loved the class and how they've, you know, appreciated everything that they've been learning and that they learned that, you know, money is more than just something that you exchange, but it's a way of life. And so wanted to just, you know, tell them job well done because it's definitely something that we need to continue to highlight and continue to support. So with that being said, Madam President, those are my announcements.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing us that update on Mr. Cooper's program and that Financial Health and Literacy Program. To the young student that was able to obtain the 750 credit score, my mother always told me, good credit score is like a good reputation. You always want to protect it. So hope he will. Thank you. He or she will. Thank you very much. Do your best. All right. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 25th, has been canceled due to lack of cases, so we will hear the open space ordinance information at our next meeting. The Southern Area Framework Plan unveiling is tonight at the Avondale Library from 5:30 to 6:30. So you only have a window of one hour to get to the Southern Area Framework Plan unveiling, but it's very important. Avondale Library is at 509 40th Street South, and the Framework Plan will designate development of your neighborhood for the next 50 years. So it would be good to go and see what is being recommended. Neighborhood Association meetings, the Redmont neighborhood would have met tonight at 5:00, but they've rescheduled to January 31st, in person at 5:00 PM at the Botanical Gardens. And as every week I do, I'm recommending to all residents of District Three that they visit our website to get all of the announcements that are made that there's not time to say verbally right now. And that's at www.bhamdistrict3number3.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. In addition to the Framework Plan unveiling that Counselor Abbott mentioned at 5:30 at the Avondale Library, there are two neighborhood meetings tonight. Fountain Heights meets at 6:00 PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center, and Crestwood North meets at 6:30 PM at Girls Incorporated. I also want to take opportunity just to remind folks about the Eastern Area Birmingham On-Demand Service. So that area covers the corridor on First Avenue North in Woodlawn, all the way up the Parkway in the Roebuck area to about where the Family Dollar is. Other destinations of note in that service area are the Pigly Wiggly in Eastlake, Ruffner Mountain Nature Center, the Roebuck Shopping Center, the Walmart Supercenter, St. Vincent's East. All of those places are accessible. You know, other neighborhoods, Huffman, Killer Springs, Gate City, Southeast Lake, you can utilize the Birmingham On-Demand Service to get a ride for $1.50 anywhere in that service area. So there's, there's an app that you can use to utilize the service, but there's also a telephone number that you can call to hail a ride. Usually, the driver shows up within less than 10 minutes. And so it's a $1.50 for the first passenger. If you have a, someone who's in your party, like a child, each additional passenger rides half-price. So this is, I feel like, a tremendous service, especially for a lot of our communities. You know, we have roughly about 10%, 10% to 15% of our population that don't have access to a private automobile. So they rely on family members and other means of getting around, and this is something that definitely can improve their quality of life at, you know, an affordable price. So please take advantage of that. There's a lot of, you know, services available in that eastern area service zone. And it also connects to the Woodlawn BRT station, so you can use that to access other parts of the city. And of course, the BRT goes all the way to the Crossplex. So again, Birmingham On-Demand, can download the Via app or check out their website to get additional information. Thank you. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. And yesterday, it seems like, was it yesterday? You had the Transportation Committee meeting, and Counselor Protem and I were listening, were there by WebEx. I did have a question. I know that Mrs. Shaw, the Director of the BJCTA or the BJCTA, she did come over and make a presentation. And I wondered, will that presentation be made available to all the counselors? It was a PowerPoint, I believe?
Yes, we will distribute that. Of note, one important thing that I think people should have on their radar, well, for the counselors, I expect that next week we'll have the agreement between the city and BJCTA on the council agenda for consideration. It's basically the same exact contract as what we approved in previous years. This contract would just be effective through June 30th of this year. Other things that ridership should be aware of is that there are some route changes that are being considered. Now that the BRT is up and operating, they're considering several, changing several routes to intersect with the BRT line to essentially shorten those routes. A good example that I'm really familiar with is the Number 17, which services the eastern side of town. It goes out to the Walmart in Eastwood, which is, you know, a popular destination. Currently, that route comes all the way downtown. What's being proposed is that that route would run from the Woodlawn BRT station and essentially go out to the Eastwood area through Gate City. So that will significantly shorten the amount of time that it takes to, for that route to, you know, be circulated. And other routes, I think it's probably about four different routes, are, they're considering doing the same thing, and essentially the purpose is to cut off that, that time that the bus needs to get all the way back into Central Station. What's being proposed is that those routes would intersect with the BRT line and connect there. So those changes are being proposed to go into effect in March, I believe.
Thank you very much. And we'll look forward to that presentation as well as when we consider the item for next week. Thank you so much. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Press on Neighborhood Association meeting has been canceled, which would have taken place this Thursday. As my colleague Counselor Abbott stated, the draft presentation of the Southern Area Framework will be at Avondale Library only from 5:30 to 6:30. And so I know that there was lots of griping, that it was, all the other frameworks were done first, and so, you know, if you gripped, show up from 5:30 to 6:30. And then on the economic development and tourism front, Birmingham Restaurants Week's Winter Edition will run January 26th through February 4th this year. We have 15 participating restaurants. Obviously, there's specials on their menus for both food and drinks, and you can check that out at bhambrestaurantweek.com. So we're looking forward to that. There's restaurants all over the city of Birmingham, so that's all we've got.
Thank you. And I just also want to note for those residents that were speaking about the Southern Area Framework Plan, the Southwest Area Framework Plan is actually being, we're working on it at this time. So I don't want them to feel alone that there are others that are ahead of them, there's some that are still working. So thank you very much. And as you said, those meetings are announced. They just had one Monday night at the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood. So if you're concerned about what's going on in your area, you need to be in attendance of those meetings. So thank you very much. And we'll be sure to announce them as they come ahead as well. Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. These are just some neighborhood meetings. Dolomite Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at 6:00 PM. They'll meet on conference call. Their dialing number is 602-580-9525. The access code is 3789426. Counselor Quinn has already announced that Fountain Height will meet tonight in person at the Fountain Height Rec Center that's located at 1105 Fifth Avenue North. Ennem Ridge Neighborhood will meet on Thursday at 5:30 on Zoom. And the next Public Safety Meeting will be today at 1:00 PM. The next, then after that, the next meeting will be Tuesday, February 14th. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, February the 9th by 1:00 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. The District Six Office will host our South Side Town Hall this Thursday, January 26th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. So if you are in Neighborhoods, Five Point South, North Tissfield, South Tissfield, Woodland Park, which means my neighbors, I hope to see y'all there, it will be at Westminster Presbyterian Church, located at 26th Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, 3521. We will have light refreshments and water, and you'll be able to hear from department heads and myself. The District Six Office will host the West Side Town Hall, says Mason City, Oakwood Place, West Dan Manor, and Arlington West Dan, this Monday, January 30th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at New Hope Baptist Church. The next PIC meeting will meet next Tuesday, February 7th. Oh, sorry, it won't be next Tuesday. Well, we'll meet Tuesday, February 7th at 2:00 PM. Submissions are due next Wednesday, February 1st by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next PIC agenda. Email submissions to laquita.wilson@birminghamal.gov and ethan.harris@birminghamal.gov. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet Monday, February 13th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, February 8, 2023, by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Agenda. Email submissions to laquita.wilson and ethan.harris@birminghamal.gov. Also, we have Tissfield Day that's coming up. So the committee met, and they wanted to have a survey for all of the Tissfield residents and business owners. So if you would like to take that survey, text TISFORDAY to 205-580-1306, and you'll receive a text with the link to the survey. Also, we will have copies of the survey at your local libraries and recreation centers. Also, for more information on the exciting events, when your neighborhood meetings are, et cetera, happening in District Six, visit our website at www.d6bham.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Protem. These are our announcements for District Seven. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings in District Seven this week. These are the following bulk trash pickup dates. Wednesday, January 25th, the bulk trash pickup will be in the Riley Trevallik Neighborhood. Thursday, January 26th, it will occur in the Green Acres Neighborhood. And Friday, January 27th, pickups will be in West Goldwire and Garden Highlands Neighborhood. Please dial 311 at 254-6312 to report a missed pickup, or the D7 hotline at 205-304-1797 to report illegal dumping. The Administration Committee meeting is scheduled today in the council chambers at 2:00 PM. We do have an item that might be of interest to all counselors, where we will be reviewing the proposed changes to the C A, CAB or the CAC. I never knew which alphabet to call it.
CAB.
CAB the first time. All right. Thank you. So that meeting will be held today at 2:00 PM. Counselors, congratulations to those counselors. Just for the public, want you to know that we're moving along with our ARPA funding. Congratulations to those counselors. They got their items through, and we know we continue to work with those. I do want to still put it out there, we know that there were some changes, proposed changes to the guidelines for ARPA, and maybe a little bit lessening of those guidelines. So we just wanted to ensure that... So we just wanted to ensure that we kept abreast of any changes that might affect opportunity for those who may have funding, that we could submit those and get those in. So thank you very much. I continue, I just, I wanted to start thinking about having some type of tidbits during my particular announcements each week when it comes to code enforcement. I just want to tell you about a story. So we have an area in a neighborhood that residents have been dumping their leaves and piling them in this area. Now, there's trash, or what seems to be trash that's being placed there from work that had been done in a home near that area. So the contractor is now putting that trash on top of that. So now the leaves have created a dump site. Okay? So we asked the question, how do we get that picked up? Because first of all, the leaves should have been bagged, correct? So I just want to remind us, in our own way, we can create the problems for our neighborhoods. And so now we're being asked to get someone out there and pick that up. And I believe that would be a bulk trash pickup as relates to that. So I just wanted to remind us as residents, sometimes we create our own problems when we don't understand what our ordinances are or what our codes that need to be enforced. So let's just keep that in mind, just a little tip for today, and let's just all work together to keep our neighborhoods clean. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you would allow us to go through the names that are listed for speaker comments, our speakers list. Thank you.
Hello, councilmembers.
Good morning. You have three minutes.
I'm Stephanie, the mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just here to restate about the issue that we had before. I told you all I was gonna come back and let you know that, hey, we still needed your support in the Woodlawn community. So please just know that we're still on that battle, fighting the good fight. January the 26th is the hearing. Also, I have some good announcements, I have some good announcements. So we started a youth neighborhood association in Woodlawn, and for the first time, we will have a meeting greet with the officers on January the 28th. We also partnership with quite a bit partnerships in the Woodlawn community. So we have like the Business District, Polaris, who's letting us host it there, the LPLA from Woodlawn High School, the SGA, and leaders of excellent. I was so excited when you said grant money, I was like, yes! So we're so excited with that. And also Leader Isla will be hosting a event too. So we got our youth busy on both hands. And so just look out for some great things because we keeping our youth involved in positive things and just continue to help us in your thoughts and prayers as we fight the good fight in Woodlawn. Anything else I'm missing, Councilor? Okay, but we're on the ground running, and so we just appreciate teaching everyone of you all standing for us, and thank you for those who are supporting us, they're sending their letters for us, and we still needing your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Appreciate you. Thank you. Next speaker?
Uh, is it Danielle Stanley? Or Daniel? Daniel, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Stanley. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I have like a serious issue.
We can't hear you. Could you put the mic a little bit closer to you?
A serious issue, and I guess I'm seeking a councilman to help and, I don't know, understanding. I thought I had everything planned out on what to say and how to approach this, but apparently I don't. I live at 2305 Avenue North, which is known as Bankhead Towers, and it's, I guess it's a new, not a new development, it's something under development. So the current issue I'm having is, it's one of our millennial management, which is a housing complex or a property complex. We have a major drug issue, and we have a major lot of issues. Several of our tenants and people have been attacked, ten of us has been murdered, and I'm sorry that the heaviness of the situation, but currently I'm in a pretty bad time and point in my life dealing with this property and this group of individuals and this management company. So when I came to speak to the council, they told me to state a complaint, and I didn't know how to do that or what to do because I don't have much legal know-all as you do. So I'm coming here to state that I am here and that it is an issue. So when I went to go deal with that issue, I have found out that also the police and the Birmingham police is involved. I can't say that they are all involved, but there is several cops and authorities in that station and in those areas that is enough to cause me a physical and personal problem. So moving forward, I don't know what much I can say more or do to help better guard myself and get help with this situation because legally I don't have the funds and the backing to go against a multimillion dollar corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley, for bringing this to our attention. I believe that there's some resources that we could provide to you. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll have one of our team members speak with Mr. Stanley right outside just to at least be able to connect with the managers of the property and then be able to coordinate with our police department as well. So we'll have someone speak with you outside.
See, the issue is, we have did that, we have contacted HUD, I have spoke with management, and that's when the harassment from the Birmingham police happened, started to happen. I've been tailed and followed. So I went through the proper channels and what I needed to do, and it turned out backwards. I was attacked, I've been stabbed, and I've been held at gunpoint, all under facility of these people and some of the police officers. So when I went to go to police, I don't have a problem finding a police report going through proper channels. Several of my police reports have went missing. So now I'm trying to get the help of my dad, who's a sheriff for Jefferson County for thirty years, and my family, who is in the military, they're trying to figure out what to do next. I have went through those channels, and I went through the channels the best way I knew how. So to this day, the person that attacked to stab me is still all on the loose, and it's the DA, I talked to the DA, and I did everything I could. So that avenue is not something I'm willing to pursue, period.
Mr. Stanley, if you would allow us, now that you brought this to our attention?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would allow us to work with the mayor's administration to provide additional resources?
Yes, ma'am.
And so that we can assist, and you escalated this now, and we could assist in giving you additional resources for that. So we're gonna allow you to talk with that staff, and thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
It should be Brother Sajid Hatcher.
Good morning, Brother Sajid.
Good morning. City Council, Mayor's office, in search and search. Let me first off start by saying Happy New Year to all. Been a while, you know, man, just want to first off by saying that, hey, I want to come down here, not going to tear a loan, I want to talk about a crisis within a crisis. And City of Birmingham, we're in a crisis, y'all. Yeah, we definitely are. When six-year-old kids are being killed, twelve-year-old kids are being killed, kids can't sleep in their house are being killed, and we're just, you know, steadily talking about the entertainment that's coming to Birmingham, talking about the comedy shows that's coming on, because I kind of be on one radio broadcast, and I listen to the other one a lot, and all I hear is entertainment, 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 how the football team is doing, and Dave Chappelle and Chris Rock is on the way to town. And, you know, it's just a time to take a look inside of our hearts. Throughout the Bible, I'm in Mark 9, verse 36. The Bible said Jesus was moved with compassion. Why, Brother Sajid? Because when he saw the need of the people, when he saw the suffering of the people, from turning that wort into wine, all the way from raising lather from the dead, from the woman with dish of blood, from making the blind see the lame walk, from getting into fire referring with Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, he had compassion. And all Brother Sajid is reaching out saying, y'all, we gotta get more compassion for our citizens, y'all, because our people are falling, mothers and families are crying, and young people are dying. It's not an everyday thing, y'all. I know we're kind of lacking on police staff, because I talked to some officers, said, Brother Sajid, we ain't got enough police officers, and all that kind of stuff, but we gotta be more concerned. Brother Quinn, I'm with you 100% in what you be saying in front of them cameras about these murder suspects, they knew the people, they were familiar with each other, I'm with that 100%. But I would ask one thing, are you and some lawmakers in Randall, would y'all go to Montgomery and do a press conference and tell them people that was a disaster coming out with a no care permit law? Would you go down there and tell them that? Would you have a press conference and tell them that? Would y'all go in the back where you do them look come there and say that in front of camera, that we the biggest city in Alabama, and we'd had more violence even since Randall hired the new police chief? You know, different race, different faith, that didn't do no good. Violence has gotten more out of hand. You know what I mean? Well, I know we want God to help us, but God said, I need something from y'all too. And it's in Second Chronicles 7, 14, if my people that are called by my name, when I'm going to serve and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, get in the hell from heaven, I forgive they sin, did, I will heal their land. If we don't turn, we gonna burn. We going on with pot over here and entertainment over here, and these little kids are being killed, y'all. And now I see, we got all these people coming down here talking about, they gotta stop the violence this, and I'm a part of stop the violence. And I've been with hundreds of families as they were grieving, over their houses, went to trial with them, did some of them ferrets. I ain't never met none of these folks. I ain't never seen them at a killing site where the body was on the ground, I never met none of them. So I know some of that's tied in the finances, if we can get a grant, everything ain't about no grant, because Paul said, if they don't give me a dime, I must preach this gospel.
Thank you, Brother Sajid.
I'm not finished. Can I get two more minutes, a vote on two more minutes?
It would take a member of the council if they wanted to allow you more time, because your time is up, sir.
I move to extend Brother Sajid speaking time by two more minutes.
I thank y'all so much.
Right, two minutes, Brother Sajid.
I thank y'all.
Hold up, Brother Sajid.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you, sir. You got two more minutes.
I thank y'all for two more minutes. Yeah, we all, we just gotta come up with a different plan. Y'all, let me tell you one more thing going on in City of Birmingham. We are divided. A kingdom divided ain't gonna stand. A city divided ain't gonna stand. Y'all know why all of us got our different little thing going on? Because we all want to be popular. We all want to be on the stage. Look what I'm doing. I can do it better than he doing, she doing it, all that stuff. And it's none of us really doing nothing. If we ain't got God in front of us, we ain't doing nothing. We ain't nothing. But if we can come and play certain folks that's in politics, we'll jump to their need. This ain't about that, this about these lives. A life more important than a lot, a body more important than a building. You know what I mean? We gotta stop this whole stuff. Black life could really matter, should matter, would matter if we stopped killing each other. Now the next time there's a killing, I pray no time soon. I want to see a fear of y'all out there at the site, why the body laying on the ground, hugging, the kind of stuff that Brother Sajid do, comforting some of the family members, because we ought to agree with those that, oh, if you say you saved, then you got Christ. We ought to agree with those, agree, comfort those that need comfort during mourning time, because we don't never know when our time is up, y'all. Y'all know James said life is like a vapor, it'll appear for a moment and you're gone. And I wasn't wanting to come down here and got this job and miss some important people and dressed up, and that's all I did. I did some of the stuff that the rich folks wanted me to do, but the mother folk cross town, they falling every day. We got to do better, that's all I'm saying, y'all. And I tried to say today, without all that hollering cannon, and again, Happy New Year, and when Randall is here and he get up, Brother Sajid, that sickens my spirit, because when he was campaigning, he was at your barbecue, he was everywhere the people was, he wanted to shake everybody's hand, and soon as some of us get elected, we get up and lead a chair when the people get up here to speak. Man, if I can't face criticism, I don't need to be no leader, because if everybody ain't near me, I ain't no real leader. Somebody wrote me saying, no, I don't like you, I can't stand you, now you're a leader. That's the way they did Jesus. Remember they hold down one minute? Crucify him the next minute. And that's what people do to some of y'all. They'll pretend like they going along with y'all and say crucify you the next minute. Thank y'all for your time this morning.
Thank you. Councilors, can I call for a motion for adjournment?
No, move second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
So we are here in Norwood, in the Norwood neighborhood, getting ready for our cleanup day. Today, of course, is MLK Day. So excited to be out here, just to be able to serve, man.
Well, I've been in the neighborhood over forty years. So I've been serving a long time, wealth and without a title. You know, this is our community, and you know, charity starts at home, and it really makes you feel good when you give back to your own neighborhood, and it encourages other people to want to come out and help you serve.
Things are gonna happen on their own, and neighbors have a vested interest in where they live. Our kind of manifestation of that here in Norwood is our monthly cleanups, and, you know, I think that it's a twofold initiative. You know, one thing that we do is that we try to, you know, do the practical thing of cleaning up our neighborhood and setting an example of having a clean place to live. But I think it's also a great opportunity for neighbors to network and congregate and see each other, particularly in these still tough times with COVID and not having in-person meetings. I think this is a great way for us to get together and to, you know, see our neighbors and to meet new neighbors and welcome new neighbors to the community.
We know that Martin Luther King stood for service, and so it's a great opportunity for us to be out here as councilmen, residents of this neighborhood, to get out here and serve our community by cleaning up. And so excited about doing it and looking forward to connecting with more residents today.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. Stay safe.